Well, welcome back, everyone. We're back for our afternoon session of the Cook County Board of Commissioners. And we're going to begin this afternoon with a presentation by DDA, David Drown and Associates. And to introduce our presenter, Allison Plummer from Human Resources will share some information about Pat.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Welcome again. I'm just going to provide a brief introduction. Everyone, this is Patrick Melvin. He goes by Pat, so feel free to call him Pat or Mr. Melvin, whatever. Whatever works. But Pat is with DDA Human Resources, Inc., and is here to provide a presentation and a proposal on the services they could provide for our search for potentially another new county administrator. The information that he is going to go over is included in your packet today as well for your reference.
Thank you so much. And welcome, Pat.
And I'll just be in the back if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Allison. Madam Chair and Commissioners, good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me up. I always love the opportunity to get out of the office and especially come up to a beautiful Cook County. So, thank you. I came up last night and had a nice relaxing morning. And yeah, beautiful country up here. So, thank you. I just want to briefly, you know, you have in your packet a proposal which kind of goes over some of the details. What I was going to do is I was just going to review the PowerPoint, and I'm going to keep it very short. So if you have any questions, please feel free to, you know, slow me down. And I'm more than happy to take more time, but I also realize that you have a busy day ahead of you, and so I don't want to take up too much time. So first, I just want to tell you a little bit about our qualifications, kind of our process and our approach, and then kind of what you can anticipate, you know, receiving in the end. So I believe that you've worked with DDA before. I know that DDA works with you on some other issues, not necessarily recruitments. We've been around for 25 years. We're kind of a smaller organization of about 11 staff. We do a variety of different things, ranging from compensation, classification, finance, economic development, as well as recruitment. So we're doing a lot of different things. The staff that work for DDA, myself included, come from a background of working in county and city government. For me, I was a county administrator for a number of years in McLeod County. I was also a special projects administrator. You'd be amazed at what gets classified as a special project in Wright County. And then I've worked with several cities as well. So we have practical experience and kind of understand the challenges that you may be dealing with in terms of, you know, public information, different things like that. We, and when I say "we," there's primarily four of us that conduct recruitments. We've done over, well over 150 recruitments, and we specialize in Minnesota. We've done a few in Wisconsin and some other states, but our primary focus is Minnesota. And for that reason, we tend to be very involved and engaged and know some of the different internship programs, some of the instructors, and some of the people out there that we often, you know, make aware of job openings. So basically, if we move ahead with this recruitment, I will be kind of your primary contact person. I certainly work with some of the other staff at DDA. We compare notes. We share what's going on in different recruitments. And then there'll also be Liz who will be working with me. But I will be your primary point of contact. So if there's any questions or anything like that, you don't have to question who should I contact. I will, I'm the person to talk to you about that. Some of the recruitments that we currently have underway, I just, you know, included a list there. The ones that I'm working on right now, I'm working on the City of Jackson, Minnesota for a city administrator. I am also, I just wrapped up Nobles County. They're looking for a CHS administrator and a public health supervisor. I'm also working with Benton County, which is in the Saint Cloud area, working with them on an HR director and a human services director. So obviously, we deal with county administrators, city administrators, but we also deal with other, oh, thank you. We also deal with other, so we also deal with other positions. So here's just a list of the recruitments that we've completed in 2023 and 2024. Not all-inclusive, but the majority of them are listed there. As you can see, a number of them are city administrators. We've got some finance directors, executive directors. But typically, it does tend to be kind of that higher level, the city and county government that we've worked for. So, and I would encourage you, if any of those ring a bell, you know, please feel free to reach out to individuals and say, hey, you worked with DDA. How did that experience go for you? I kind of already hit upon the services that have evolved and that we offer. Nice thing is, you know, as we're working together, one of the things that we'll be taking a look at is, you know, what is the salary range for this position? And being that you're also working with DDA on comp and class, we can pull some information and determine, you know, where is that situated? Are you in the right spot to attract somebody? Or is it something where you may want to consider, you know, adding a little bit more to that salary? So this is, now I'm going to go into the process that we have. The process is quite thorough. We've obviously done a number of recruitments. So we have seen what has worked. We've seen what hasn't worked. We've tweaked it, and this is what we've come up with. So at any point here, feel free to ask me for further clarification, because it is quite detail-oriented. But first part that we do is we sit down and we would talk with you as board members and staff and anybody that you feel it's important that we talk to, to gather input about, we're looking for a county administrator, but specifically, what are the needs of Cook County? You know, what has worked in the past? What maybe hasn't worked? Just get an overall view of, you know, the individual that you're looking for. Are there any specific things? Obviously, you're going to be, you want somebody who's a good manager. You want somebody who has long-range planning, is able to set goals and help achieve goals. But there may be some other things that, you know, are unique to Cook County. So I would sit down one-on-one interviews with yourselves, as well as staff, and gather that information. We would then go and take a look at the job description. I mentioned the salary range. We'll address that. We will then go and put together a beautiful eight-to-10-page profile that was included in your proposal. It was a profile, I believe, for library recruitment that we did. But we're not here just to sell the job. That's a big part of it. But we also want to sell the community. So we're going to talk about, you know, what are, what are the attractions? Why would somebody love living in Grand Marais or in Cook County? We're going to talk about the educational opportunities. We're going to talk about healthcare. We're going to talk about, you know, attractions, parks, everything. So we're selling the area. At the same time, we're selling the job. So that'll be in a profile that you will have an opportunity to review. You'll be able to look at the pictures, look at the text. Anything that you want changed, we can certainly change. What goes out will be board-approved, so there won't be any surprises in terms of what we're advertising. That will be the primary tool that I'll be using when I reach out to candidates. We'll look at posting for a four-week period. During that time, I'm reaching out to individuals. I'm sending through LinkedIn. I'm sending the profile out. I'm identifying people who have a background, maybe in county administration or maybe some sort of business, depending upon what your parameters are, reaching out to those individuals and making them aware of the position. So at the close of that four-week period, then I will take a look at the candidates, and I will advance to you, the top candidates. Those individuals will be asked to do a video interview. A video interview, for some people, is very uncomfortable, but they can do it in the comfort of their own home. They have an opportunity to work with the equipment, you know, find out, you know, how does my background look? And then they answer several questions. It's a great opportunity, and we hear a lot of positive feedback from commissioners saying, you know, that was great. I saw how they presented. I saw how they responded to questions where they didn't have time to prepare a response. Because basically, they get a minute before the camera goes live, once they've, you know, worked with it and figured out how to operate it, then they go live. So then we will provide that information. We'll provide the video interview. We'll provide a work personality index, which was included in your proposal. It takes a look at individuals and how they prefer to function, and gives you kind of a scoring. Very helpful tool, but it just gives you an idea. Does this person go to others and ask their opinions and consult with others? Or do they look to statutes? You know, how do they make decisions? So it gives you insight into that individual. And then they will also have an information disclosure statement. The information disclosure statement allows them, if there's been previous jobs that have been short-term, or if there's been any negative press about them, it allows them to be proactive with you and to share, you know, this happened and there's this article out there. We don't recommend that commissioners go out there and search the internet on candidates. But we know that, you know, human nature is to sometimes do that. And so we want them to be forward and upfront with you about anything that might be out So then you narrow the individuals down to, and I would recommend probably three to four, because a lot of these individuals have other applications out. And so there's a period of time of about a month between when you will select people to interview and when they will actually come in for an interview. And there's a strong possibility that you may have one, you know, an individual withdraw during that time period because they do have another application out there, or something changes with their family or their lifestyle. We would do all the backgrounds. So we do a criminal. We look into their driver's license, and I also contact references. And so that information is being provided for you. There's an intellect profile, which looks at their logic and their mathematical reasoning to kind of give you an idea of how they do. Obviously, budgeting and finances is a part of this job. So you would want someone with strong skills in that area. And then we basically put together everything that you need to conduct the interview so that on interview day, all you have to do is come in. We'll have folders. We'll have information for you. We will structure interviews however you would like. If you'd like to have a meet and greet with the public, if you'd like to have staff conduct an interview, staff and the public can certainly do that. They don't make the decision, however. It's the board that makes the decision. So they're providing input, which we share with the board, and it's ultimately the board's decision on who they choose. Once that decision is made, and typically that happens the same day as interviews, then I will work with several individuals from the board, and we work on negotiating a contract and put a tentative contract that will come before the board at a later time. So that's kind of our process. Are there any questions that you have?
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat, for presenting. I think last go-around, we had an opportunity to be involved in the formation of the interview questions. I presume that's part of the process as well? Or do you have kind of some canned questions that you try to stick to or remind me that detail?
We, certainly, that's an option. So what I can do is certainly provide some sample questions for that video interview. And then if you have, if you want to tweak that or make changes, we can certainly incorporate that in. Typically, we have, I think, six, five to six questions for that initial video interview.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant beyond that.
Oh, yes, for the final interview? Oh, yes. Definitely, you'll have an opportunity to, yeah, to provide input and to tweak and change, you know, wording. Yeah, you can certainly do that.
Other questions? Commissioner Storley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for presenting all this to us and timeframe and all of that. So over the last couple of weeks, I've been thinking about our form of government. Up until about 2013, we were under a coordinator, and that worked fine until the point that I think as a board at that time, we realized that we needed to look at an administrative form of government. And so we, we had that for, we've had that for three different terms, three different individuals as administrator. Now, I noticed on the list, I don't see the word coordinator. What is your opinion where that's going in the state to hire a coordinator instead of administrator?
Frequently, you find things happening the other way, in terms of people going from a coordinator to an administrator. And I wish I could remember, but I know there's a county that went to a coordinator and then went back to an administrator after switching. You know, I think it really depends on the organization. You know, I think the challenge is, at times, you've got multiple people. It's nice to have one person kind of at the helm, responsible, instead of trying to figure out, okay, who should have done this or that? But again, it's really up to you as, as an organization as to what is the best fit. But there are, there certainly are some that have county coordinators, but not, none that I'm aware of that are, you know, that are, it seems more of them are moving from a coordinator to an administrator.
We have the Association of Minnesota Counties that gave a real good comparison. I think we all have looked that up. Coordinator duties, administrative duties, and it seems like, as I was looking at it, the administrative part is where we are now in our counties. So that was really helpful to look that up and realize that there are a lot of good points of administrative part. So thank you.
Yes. Great question.
Other questions for Pat? Commissioner Johnson.
So I wasn't involved in the last go-around of this, and I'm curious, is that information that DDA prepared for us last time, the whole background issue, and is that public information? I guess, thinking about going forward, I would like to see what happened the last two times? What, what got us to this point? And do we need to reinvent the wheel? Or can we build off of that?
You know, certainly, we'll be, that's what we'll be doing, is using that information, updating it and building off of it to come up with a new profile. Yes.
Okay. So I'm assuming the last commissioners that were here involved got that information. And I did a search. I couldn't find what I was looking for, but I didn't spend a whole lot of time. I'm just wondering, and I did ask to see the back, what DDA did before, and is that public information? That's, I guess, what I'm asking.
Yeah. Yes, it certainly is. And I would be happy to provide a copy if that's something I...
I'm not clear what's information exactly, because some is private and some is public.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. What did you get? How did you come up, sorry, with the, I talk with my hands. How did you come up with what you were looking for? When I'm wondering about which is the best way for us to go forward? And it was determined that we should have another administrator versus anything else. And I'm hearing, considering that maybe that didn't really fit our organization. So I want to make sure we're going back to where we were. What did we say were the most important points? And make sure we all still agree, yes, that, and we need to ask the community. I mean, we got two different opinions this morning during public comment. I just want to make sure we're being, we're not rushing this process, that we're taking the time to really think about what is the best way for Cook County to move forward. And I don't think we've had enough time yet to really make sure, because we haven't even talked to our staff yet. So I'm just, I want to make sure I understand what the process is.
Yeah, DDA was not involved in that discussion. Basically, we had that AMC information, and Ryan Erdman came and presented that, rather than us just having it. And then the commissioners decided that administrative form of government was the way to go.
But when we hired Mr. Yorkey, that was through DDA?
Yes, but the decision was already made for administration. Yeah.
And what we were looking for as, that's, I guess, what I'm looking for. Are we looking for the exact same thing? Or have our needs changed? Is there something else we need to consider? And having that information of what, four years ago, somebody, some group decided what were the priorities of what we need? I would like to review that to see, is that still true? Do we still all agree on that? Could be. But since I don't know what that was, I think it'd be helpful for our discussion to make sure what we wanted and what we got is still, did it work? Did it not work? Are there any areas we may want to tweak?
Yeah, I don't know that that information will be available, but I would prefer that we do that again. Like, we go through what we're looking for, just like Pat was saying, as far as interviewing us commissioners and staff about what we're looking for in that. I would rather not go back in time and review what we were looking for then. I would rather focus on what we're looking for now.
I get that. I'm the history person who likes to go, this is what happened. This is where we're at today, using that to build off the future. So that's why I ask for background stuff, old stuff.
And so this is our discussion as to whether or not we should stick with the administrative form of government, or we're going to thoroughly examine what a coordinator, I mean, I'm not thinking that the board needs to do the work as it was long ago, but why is the coordinator position not what we need? And I'd like to have that thorough discussion. My understanding that is, I mean, the structure is the same in that this employee answers and communicates with the board. And is that because ultimately, the board answers to the voters? And with a coordinator, there's more interaction, correct me if I misunderstood what I've read, with the coordinator and the county board for sharing information.
More interaction?
My understanding is that that isn't different, that the primary difference is the supervision of all department heads. That is the most significant difference.
And the coordinator does that too, yes?
No. The coordinator does not do any personnel.
It's just commissioners that are in charge of the highway or PHHS or emergency management.
So then the hiring and firing, or the reprimanding, or the accolades come from the, from the board, not the administrator?
That is correct.
And the coordinator looks at the big picture and says, do you need more rooms or something for your maintenance department? I mean, they just, they go department by department, and that's all they do. They don't, they don't evaluate performance.
Correct.
Well, then, how would we know how anybody's performing? I, I just like, well, we wouldn't at all.
Not as well, in my opinion.
So currently, there's 12 counties in Minnesota that are using that coordinator role, and the vast majority are using that county administrator role where there is supervision over department heads.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Storley.
If I may, and to Commissioner Johnson's point, I think when we looked over the job description, because it was important to say, this is the job description four years ago, and then how can we improve? How can we maybe delete something? How can we add something? That is the current way as to how we work with DDA, with Pat, in determining the role of the administrator that we would want in Cook County. It seems to me that we need to look at what's happening today. I know history's great. Me too. I love history. I like to go back. But I think we need to go forward and define and outline and work with Pat on where we want to see it go.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, we have to keep moving forward in some way. My hope was to look at what, my notes. What did, what did we need four years ago? What was most valuable? And did we succeed? That's what I kind of want to know. Did it, did it work? Did we match all the things that were identified last time? And if we didn't, that I want to know, okay, do we need to restructure this or not? That's where I'm coming from. Because I don't know that we did. I don't, I don't have the list.
I don't know if it's a structural difference as much as maybe a personality or qualifications difference. And I think, you know, it's hard to get that quantitative data, but I think we could qualitatively look at our past administrator and ask ourselves, was, were they delivering what we expect? And if so, great. If not, I think to Pat, what Pat's saying is, are there other things that we want to have included in that? And so that's where those interviews come into play, is asking us.
So to that, where's the list of what was expected? I think that's what Commissioner Johnson is, like, when it was, what was the list that was expected from?
So that would be the job description at that time?
Did you not do, like, what is a person's profile? What's important and most important, least important? Like, you get this list and, you know, label in order of values. Which is most important? Do you do something like that?
Yes. So we have, in the profile, we have one page that is based simply upon the discussions that were held with commissioners and with staff. And that's going to call out specific things that are maybe unique to Cook County. Now that, there would be a page from four years ago that would have that information. And that's certainly something that I can provide. When you have applicants, they don't necessarily match everything that you're looking for. You know, they may be strong in one area, and you may accept, you know, kind of an inexperience in another area, but they were the best candidate at the time. But I can certainly provide a copy of what, four years ago, what was listed as the key, you know, characteristics that you were seeking, and that can, if that benefits you in helping to build what you're looking for today, certainly, I can.
That would help me.
That would be part of the profile, which is public information from four years ago.
Commissioner Mills.
Is the process any different on your end from administrator to coordinator? Or is it just purely the job description? And, I mean, when we advertise, clearly, it needs to be stated. But aside from that, is the process any different?
The process is not different. And, you know, I think that, yeah, you know, even applicants, I, you know, we're still going to reach out to the same individuals, you know, in that process, so.
So the question today is just whether or not we'd like to hire DDA to do our search, I think. Or at least at this point in the day. And as, as other commissioners have mentioned, it might be helpful to talk with staff about the form of government if there's other questions around that. Personally, I don't have questions about it, but I want to respect any questions that are out there.
So absolutely, in a coordinator form of government, the board is charged with oversight of job performance of every department head, whom I assume is then responsible for their, the people and their staff, the supervisors and that. And so I don't know how we would do that.
It's hard. When you have turnover, it makes it really hard with...
Well, we don't have much turnover, well...
On the board, we have quite a bit.
Well, on the board, we have turnover, and lately, we've had a lot of department heads fleeing. But I need a moment to think about this. Continue on.
So are there other questions for Pat? So are there other questions for Pat? I think it might be appropriate right now to, Rowan and I got a communication from Administrator Yorki, who has no skin in the game with the future here, but wanted to share some remarks with us. And so I think I'll, if it's okay with the board, read those. Dear Commissioners, I want to start by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to serve as your county administrator for the last four years. It's truly been an honor to work with you and for you and with our great staff members who strive every day to provide excellent service to county residents. We led the organization through the pandemic, created and are now implementing a capital improvement plan for county buildings, developed a three-year strategic plan for the organization, addressed deficits in employee compensation to improve recruitment and retention, and worked to build an organizational culture in which employees are valued and motivated to give their very best. I'm proud of these achievements and you should be too. When there's a change in the leadership of an organization, it makes sense to step back and see what, if any, changes could be made to improve the way our organization works. From that perspective, I understand the desire to ask whether the administrative form of government is still the right fit for Cook County. I'm leaving this position and will not be directly impacted by the outcome of this discussion, but I do want to share some ideas that I think are important for the board to consider as it explores this topic. The job of administrator is highly complex and time-consuming. In addition to the routine tasks that are a daily part of running the organization, there are new and unanticipated responsibilities that crop up constantly. These involve things like responding to concerns and complaints from residents and stakeholders, dealing with personal matters and personnel matters, addressing emergencies, large and small, and relaying to you the information you need to be effective in your roles as elected officials. Much of the work that I do is invisible to you. That is the way it should be. If I reported to you every little thing I do, I would never get anything done and would drive you mad. You hired me as a professional to run the organization, and that's what I've done. I made sure that you've had the information you need to do your jobs without getting bogged down in superfluous detail. In recent meetings, some have expressed a desire to be more actively involved in things like hiring. Under the administrative form of government, it's not routinely the commissioner's role to be involved in these processes. We have board-approved policies and procedures that we follow in hiring staff. Two commissioners sit on the personnel committee and receive monthly updates on the status of our various recruitment efforts. In my opinion, there's good and appropriate flow of information between administration, human resources, and the board. Two, you should always have had the opportunity to reach out to me if you have had questions about hiring efforts. Purposely waiting till a board meeting to raise those questions is inappropriate. If you really want to solve problems, you should be working with the administrator before and between meetings to get the information that you need. Anything else is theatrics and the taxpayers of the county deserve better. To the extent that the board wants to explore the possibility of eliminating the administrator position, these are the several things that should be under consideration. The job of the commissioner, while ostensibly part-time, is in reality full-time. The many committee assignments you all have require a significant commitment of time. And adding the oversight of departments to your responsibilities, not to mention the daily administrative work that is needed to keep the organization running smoothly, would create an unreasonable and unmanageable burden for the five of you. It would be folly to think that you could take on my workload in addition of your own and have the organization function at a high level. The daily expectations of the organization would become more disjointed and inefficient without a professional administrator. Open meeting law could prevent you from conferring as a group on time-sensitive matters. As a result, the management of the organization would become more fractured and compartmentalized. This would lead to inconsistency in how different departments operate and would make it much more difficult to implement organizational-wide changes, initiatives such as those in the strategic plan. Turning the management of the organization over to elected officials risks politicizing the work of departments and making it more like that. Departmental priorities would change after each election. This would be bad for employee morale and would have a negative effect on the quality of services they provide. Large projects, such as the development of a capital or strategic plan, would become more cumbersome and time-consuming to develop and implement. In fact, without a single point person to guide them, they may not get done at all. Oversight by elected officials would increase the risk of having short-term priorities take precedence over what is best for the organization and county residents in the long term. There are numerous examples of this in the Cook County's history prior to the establishment of the administrator position. The YMCA, the 1998 courthouse addition, and the law enforcement center are prime examples of this phenomenon and work, and it has cost taxpayers dearly. Again, I no longer have a dog in this fight, but I do care deeply about Cook County and its future. I also care deeply about our staff and want them to have the support they need to provide top-notch services to our county residents. From my perspective, it's clear that maintaining the administrative form of government will continue to provide the best value and outcomes for all who call Cook County home. Respectfully, James Yorki. So any comments or questions based on the content of the letter? I guess I would like to ask, are there any department heads that would like to provide any input to the board on this?
Hello? Yeah, I've had a chance to think about this now for a while. I've only been here four years. And so the only form of government that I am, I guess, more intimately familiar with is this. But I am able to attend, you know, a variety of meetings, conferences, talk to my counterparts across the state on what their, you know, experiences are with either an administrator or coordinator or some of the other things that that AMC program had listed. And speaking of the AMC program, it is interesting, you know, when we, when we sit on highway committee or different things, I like to look at, obviously, a lot of data and see what people are doing. I do find it overwhelming that three-quarters of counties have that form of government. I find that fascinating. I think that tells a story. Another thing I look at is small counties. So, you know, we're in the bottom 10. I think we're fifth, right in the middle, if I remember right. And so actually, the bottom 10 counties, I'm sure you all looked at this, but it's, it's 50-50, administrative and not. And so that, I feel like, also tells an interesting story. Small counties still, still do this. The things that I'm most concerned about really is continuity, politics, long-term planning, city-state-federal relationships, and our own reviews, as has already been talked about here. You know, as was, you guys had just mentioned, you know, commissioners are elected. Potentially, every two years, you have a churn of commissioners. You know, my plans don't stop at two years. They go much further than that. And, you know, some of that planning could get interrupted with that type of oversight. And I think another, you know, politics unfortunately seeps into a lot of what we do, even talking about gravel on roads or the environment, for example. Those become incredibly politicized. And so whether you have data and numbers and, I can say, hey, this is, this is what science says. What I don't want to be put in a position with is then debating science with somebody's beliefs. And that, to me, would, would not get us anywhere. It would really get in the way of the work that we're doing and just trying to come in here and do our jobs the best we can for this community. I think that long-term planning component is another huge thing, whether we talk wage surveys, CIP, my own, our own highway department long-range plans. To me, having a single point person there that kind of has the pulse on everything, not five individual bosses, but one person that can really, for lack of a better term, set the vibe for the county, I think is very important. I think you can have different people with different points of view. And if you have too many people, too many chefs in the kitchen, if you will, to lay in more anecdotes, that can complicate things a lot. So that's my two cents on it. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Are there representatives from other departments that would like to address the board? Good afternoon, Mike.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would mimic just about everything Engineer Haas said. To include the, the difference for me is that I've been here for five years, so the administrative form of government is the only one I know. However, my previous eight years in Grand Portland, I did work under the tribal council. So you did kind of have five bosses. And it was a little more, I would call it, a little more stressful for a department head, you know? Because sometimes it's easy, if I take this to Commissioner Sullivan, she might go for it. But if I take it to Commissioner Johnson, she might, you know? And much like, like Robbie said, you know, when you start a project with a person and then they move on two years later, and now that gets lost. And again, it slows everything down. It's certainly been nice for me to have that point person. If I have something weird going on, if I have something, I don't know, if I have personal stuff, whatever it is, it's, to me, it's super good to have that one person to go to. And of course, that liaison to you all. So I would, I would very much somewhat support the administrative type of government. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are there representatives of other departments that wish to speak? Good afternoon, Allison.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this really important conversation for our organization and our community. I want to echo the concerns and the benefits raised by my peers this afternoon. I want to thank former Administrator Yorki for his frankness and his communication, raising concerns from his perspective of being in this role for several years. I have been with this organization for 12 years now, so that includes each of our three county administrators and the form of government that we had previously. Granted, my perspective is limited. I wasn't in a leadership position at that point in time, but I did have some perspective on the challenges that that presented for individual departments when it comes to long-range planning, consistency across, or the organization and equity across departments. One additional concern and opportunity that I want to raise is that the challenges facing our community, our departments, are immense. And a concern I have in moving forward with a different governmental structure is that that limits the opportunity that each of you have to engage at a state and federal level to advocate for changes that can really make a difference in our community. An example of that being our childcare wage enhancement program. We've done a lot of work. We're a leader within the state and nationwide for some of the innovative programs that we have put into place to help bolster our fragile childcare system without having local leaders that can advocate for our needs regionally, at a state level, and federally. We will continue to repeat the challenges and not have as much opportunity for more broad change.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the departments who would like to bring forward information? Commissioner Hick, or Commissioner, Attorney Hick.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
Long day, sorry.
So I hope we have time to hear from Brady too. Brady and I are the two non-commissioners at the table here who do have the history of being with the organization since before there was an administrative form of government. And if, if I had a vote on this, I would vote for retaining the system that we have currently. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Also, I think about, you know, there's just been, let's say that county government in the past 17 years, when I, as I've been involved in it, has not gotten simpler. It's gotten more complex. The obligations that the state of Minnesota puts on us, our service-related responsibilities, have only gotten broader, have only gotten more onerous, complex. And so you have department heads who's, who have enough to do themselves in making sure that their departments are meeting the expectations set out in the law and by the state to provide services to the level we're required to, without also trying to handle, what I see might happen is the big projects that we need to have done periodically, that, for example, courthouse renovation or law enforcement center renovation or creating a new HRA. Those kind of big projects would be likely assigned to a department head for continuity purposes with some help from commissioners, because there would not be an administrator, a single point person, to represent the county. And that's just not, I don't see that working well. If commissioners were to take on all of the obligations that the county administrator has been handling for the last many years, you better expect to be here at the courthouse or in a meeting even more than you are now. I've heard, and, and I respect that there are different opinions out in the public, but I've heard coming out of the same person's mouth at the same time, what you do is a service and you shouldn't get paid for it. And also, you should take on the job of the county administrator because they're doing your job. It, you can't have it both ways. But the work that you do is a full-time job and you have responsibility. I would say there are a lot of things that should be with, under your, under your role that would fall to the wayside and be, and not be able to be assigned to anybody else. For example, who will advocate for us at the legislature? Who will work on statewide policies that might impact Cook County? If you're here, like, in the trenches trying to operate this government on a day-to-day basis. That's what, one thing the county administrator does for the Board of Commissioners is frees you up to do that legislative work that is really your role and that you can have a great positive impact for the people of Cook County. Doing that way, you can be out seeking funding. You can be out seeking innovative solutions for our problems because you have somebody here in a county administrator who is well compensated to do a professional job. And part of their job is to be loyal to this government, right? They're expected, they, they don't, they're trained to be an administrator. They're educated to be an administrator. They come in here with a lot of experience. And the folks who are candidates, who are good candidates for these positions are driven and successful and will bring success to the county. I've watched this county go from, you know, we have, we have not enough resources and scrambling to try to make things happen to a professional organization. And that, I'm not trying to say that we are the elite or that, that, being a professional organization has meaning in that we are able to efficiently do for our community members what we are supposed to do. And that shift would be, at least, would take at least twice as time, as much time without a county administrator. I'll cite what others have said, that the lack in, of continue, continuity in elected leadership, which can happen. And some counties have boards that, you know, they'll have the same four board members for decades. But in this county, we see a lot of change on our board. I think that's a good thing. It's hard to have both that and, and have your workforce feel like they are under a stable leadership if you don't also have somebody at the helm. if you don't also have somebody at the helm who's expected to be there for more than a two-year term. We need a, it's good to have a single face for the county, a single voice for the county. And that person comes to this board every two weeks or every week and, you know, gets feedback on what message they should be sending to the community, what the communication is and what their priorities are. But they can, they can be here every day to respond to things as they come up, instead of having to wait for a publicly noticed, an open meeting, as we're required to do if the commissioners are doing the work. I would say, in the past, I think I heard somebody with some history in this organization say this, because I have it in quotes, but, "Things got done the old way, but they did not necessarily get done well or in a timely way." Your county administrator is the information gatherer. They are the strategic planner. They're the one carrying your ideas for the county forward and your directives forward. To put that on department heads or to try to handle it by assigning each commissioner their own department or their own project, I don't see that as having a great result. So that's, that's not what I have to say.
Thank you. Rowan, from MIS, any perspective you'd like to share?
Yeah, I would echo everything that Robbie, Allison, Mike, and Molly shared. I won't, I won't say it all again. The ones that really stand out to me, I think, are the board's ability to be effective managers of directors and the additional responsibility, and how that takes away from your ability to advocate for us at the state and federal level, like Allison and Molly touched on. An example of this that is kind of ringing in my ears is Assessor Thompson shared classification reform and the financial implications of something like that to the county and what that would mean. And just for some context, he, he shared at the luncheon that, you know, had that reform taken place, the referendum that the school went out for would have had a financial impact on taxpayers more than half of what it was, because it hasn't happened. And so that type of change, that we can free our commissioners up to seek and make, I think is really valuable. When you combine that with the fact that we're looking at a map here from AMC that shows 65 other counties are doing that. And so they're at the table. They have an administrator to run the day-to-day to free them up, to go ask for the things that they need. And I think it's important and valuable that we do the same.
Auditor Powers.
Well, I'll just share the, sort of the history that I've been here. James mentioned it, the, the building projects. I saw them with, could have had better results. And it was obvious to me, the board had other distractions. And they needed someone to take that lead, whether it was the rebuild of this in addition to this building and the law enforcement center and, and the YMCA and other, all of the 1% sales tax projects, and how that might affect the ones that we've got right now going forward. Without that focus, yeah, you can have, you can have buildings that do not meet those standards. And as they say, building cost is less than the long-term operational and maintenance costs. And we've seen that. We have examples of that right here. We have a maintenance department that's been overburdened with this building, the law enforcement center, and the YMCA, for example. And that, that's expensive. And so I won't go into the other aspects that others have talked about, but, but I would say, I mean, that, and that doesn't, that aspect doesn't necessarily require administrator. I mean, you could have a strong coordinator position. They could have potentially gotten better results on big projects like that. But, and whether the things you're talking about, I'm not sure if coordinators could do that or not. I'm not sure if they do that in other counties. But I really can't speak to that. We haven't, we didn't try coordinators, so. I'm, I'm sure you can have strong or weak in, in whatever position you choose. It's probably easier in the administrative position since it's defined or strong. But I'd say too, it really depends a lot, I think, on, on the board's goals. And what, you know, what are the goals that you're giving them? And, and I think the, you know, the public is talking about things like that. And that's really in your purview as to what you want them to accomplish. So that could, that can change too. Dramatically, they can change how that position operates, whether it's administrator, coordinator. And I think board members have a lot of power in how that operates.
Thank you. Rowan, from the perspective of an interim administrator, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I guess I kind of added it. So I'll, I'll flip it around. What I said was kind of the view from an interim county administrator. Specifically from MIS, though, it's very similar. I mean, we see things coming down from the BCA that frankly are unfunded or underfunded mandates. And if I was to go and say, you know, "We can't do this," or "It's just going to cost us more," that's not as effective as a county commissioner going to the state and federal representative saying, you know, "This is, this is hurting our taxpayers." So having someone that's in a dedicated role to meet with county department heads and understand the issues that they see and be able to communicate that information back to county administrators, or, sorry, county commissioners, who are able to then go and advocate for us, I think is very valuable.
Thank you. Well, I know personally, I, I think about my last four years, and I think about the amount of time allocated to policy, procedure, but looking at regional work, work at the legislature, and, and also at the federal level. And it's, it's amazing the power that we have as commissioners and what we're able to do when we have that time. It would be hard for me to imagine, as a commissioner, being in a role where I'm a commissioner and I'm overseeing staff, department heads in particular, in a supervisory situation, and then trying to do the other work for a region and our state. So I personally really advocate for the administrative form of government and having that point person, that face of our organization. And I can say, when, when the tragedy in James' life happened, I got calls from Tina Smith's office. It wasn't just local people. And that's about the connections that not only we as commissioners have with federal and state officials, but that our administrator develops working on projects. And that, that was just incredible for me, that that was one of the first calls I received. So I guess I would like us to strongly consider moving forward with an administrative government. And I feel so confident with DDA and their process. It is so thorough. And we have input, our department heads have input, and our community has input into that process. And I think that is critical for us at this point in time. Thoughts from other commissioners?
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Johnson. First of all, I want to thank all the department heads that spoke today. That is valuable information for our community. And thank you, Chair, that we're having the discussion, because it has felt like maybe this was a foregone conclusion, that we would just move ahead. And I appreciate the opportunity that we all get to speak. I have some reservations, but I'm going to, we're going to work through this. This is, I don't want to rush this process. "Oh, we've lost our administrator and we can't function without one. Let's hurry up and get one." I just want to make sure we take the time to make sure we talk about what are our board goals moving forward. I don't disagree with anything that was said today. My father was a commissioner under the way-old system, and I know that doesn't work. So I advocate for something. I don't know, coordinator, administrator, there's, I don't know yet. But once we just, we sit down and figure out what our goals are, how we want to, what are we looking for? What are the important things? I do think we need somebody. So thank you for the opportunity to have the discussion. Thank you to those that were willing to come forward and speak to the issue, because that is how a commissioner learns, when people are willing to come and speak their mind and talk to you. So thank you for that.
Other comments?
All right, did someone make the motion?
Madam Chair. So I'm wondering, though, he's representing DDA today. He would like an answer. What I'm hearing is that you still want to discuss more which way we should go. Is that your thought right now? That we would not make a decision today?
I'm willing to start the process if we, I, I don't know. I guess we start the process and we go through with them, because they're going to help us figure out what do we want, what do we need?
In terms of qualifications and skills and criteria.
Where does that fall on the line? Is it an administrator or coordinator? I don't know.
I think what we need to decide is, if we go with a coordinator, we are all going to be responsible for personnel, for the supervision of our department heads. I personally do not feel comfortable. I don't think that that is the area of expertise and where I plan to spend my time.
I agree.
And I don't feel qualified either.
So what I'll do is, I'll make a motion to move forward with an administrative government and authorize DDA to begin the process for our search. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We will look forward to working with you, Pat.
Thank you very much. I look forward to it as well, so.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful afternoon.
All right. All right. Move forward at this point in time with our 2025 budget discussion. Give everybody a minute to kind of regroup and gather their materials.
Are we sent to a budget discussion?
Are we what?
Still working off the old one.
So as we get started with our budget discussion, and we have more meetings coming up, but we have a lot of information and input and questions. I know that Commissioner White, you had submitted some questions to Rowan. And let's just kind of start with your questions and take it from there.
Do you want me to pull those? He answered my questions for us.
Sure, if you'd just like, though, for the public to.
Oh, for the, I don't remember what the questions were. I was sending along questions from other, I'll have to pull this up to find.
Okay.
To find them. So you should, I'm not, you should probably run to somebody else.
All right. So are there any questions? I guess we'll start, Commissioner Starley, with department heads who are here. Or also, we can access Elena Hansel by phone and we can access our assessor, Bob Thompson, by phone.
Not at this moment. I have done some research with other folks, so I'm good for right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mills.
I don't think I have any questions. In my mind, it's just a matter of, do we want to move forward with these new funding requests, which were largely based off of our strategic planning? And to what extent do we want to? We can kind of pick and choose. And then how would we pay for that? And, you know, the levy, in my mind, is the last resort. So if there's ways we can, you know, accomplish the same thing using fund balance that we, we have ample of, that would be great. But of course, that's not sustainable in the long term. And so we have to talk about what the plan is there and kind of that off-ramping from that and what we're comfortable even spending out of the fund balance, if anything. So I guess, yeah, that's, that's the long and short of it there.
So we, we have that discussion about fund balance, which was a question that I had as well. To what level are we going to use some of those funds? To talk about the federal PILP money that we have, or that I should say, Auditor Treasurer Powers has been able to keep for us, given the fact that we might have had to pay that money back. And so he's been very fiscally cautious about that. And then we also have our state and local fiscal recovery funds, which we talked about this morning, $553,498, which we need to expend by the end of the year. So my recommendation is that we start with those state and local fiscal recovery funds, because we want to use them. We have them. We don't want them to just disappear, go away. So are there any kind of thoughts on those funds from commissioners? Commissioner Johnson.
Well, yeah, I've got to reorganize my thoughts here. So some of those one-time funds, I am very uncomfortable using for ongoing levying expenses. I agree. The $200,000 for the North Shore Waste, one-time expense? Yes, I can support that. BKV Group, one-time expense? Yes, I can support that. We all know housing can use anything. Using it to offset our levy, I don't think that's the appropriate use for those funds. So at our last Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee, a question came up about personnel costs. And later on our agenda are the contracts for two of the unions. And I'm wondering, has the budget been resubmitted since October 10th is the last time we got information on numbers? And I'm wondering if those personnel numbers got updated as far as benefit costs and all of that? Where are we at on what we need, the number we need to cut if we really want to get to 5%? What's that, what's the amount?
Yes, I don't, I don't know. I haven't seen the contracts. But we all budgeted the 3% cost of living. So that, that's the main one that's already in there. I have added in to, to the numbers when I did an analysis on one of the questions you asked. The VIBA, which I understand is approved, the addition there. So, but that's, again, is not huge. It's the cost of living, because that- It's the cost of living because that affects all of the taxes, et cetera, down the line. That's the largest single thing. So it's not, I don't think it's going to be substantially, although I don't have all those numbers right now. Because I haven't seen the contracts. There might, sometimes there are surprises to me, but I don't, I doubt it. I doubt it. So I think you've got the substantial numbers. We, we brought it down to nine point six just with process, things that we knew that we had changed. Without making, with you guys not making any decisions, any. So I think that's, those are, I think, pretty good numbers to work on at this moment. And, uh, and those, I mean, our dollar increase at nine point six two is a million, four sixty-three, eight eighteen is the increase in the levy. Our fund balance, this is the 2023 fund balance. With our audited numbers. We are at ninety-four percent of our current expenses. We set by, by policy not to go below seventy-five. And this is for the, the major funds, the general fund, Roden Bridge, Human Services, the building fund and the airport. And right now we're at four million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand. This is at the end of twenty-three, over the seventy-five percent. And that includes that, the additional payment in lieu of tax, which is essentially sitting in our fund balance. And that was two point one five seven million.
Can you repeat those two? Did you say two point four seven three million? Over?
Over, the excess, I'm sorry, four point two seven three.
Four point two seven three. Okay, thank you. That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Because it included the PILT and I was like.
Yeah, it includes, includes that PILT, the two point one five seven that we've been holding back. Because we thought we might have to return it. We do not. So all of that is there. And I know there's been, you know, discussion of how we used fund balance in the past. And maybe overused it to keep the levy low. But a lot of this was in, you know, was, that was intended to be used for levy. We couldn't at the time. So, I mean, it's, it's there to, it's, it's how you want to use it. And over what period of time and to what extent, but it's certainly there. Twenty twenty-four again looks good because of interest rates. Because of conservative budgeting, number one, on most of our departments. You've seen our first three quarterly reports. At three quarters of the year, we're below the seventy-five percent. And the revenue is way above because of the interest rates. I could answer your question now regarding interest rates. So Stacy had asked a question regarding how do we determine what we put in our budget for interest rates? I can give a, a standard answer for other years. But for these last two years, with these extraordinarily high rates, I didn't use that standard practice. What are the rates? How do I think they might be adjusted a little bit going forward? How is our fund balance? That our interest rates are based on how much money we have and are investing. And yeah, we do that analysis every year. But I use more of a what's, what do I really, my gut is telling me what's coming? And what do I trust to put into the budget? And it wasn't anywhere near what we've been collecting the last two years. Number one, because the Fed has made it very clear that they were going to cut rates, you know, months ago. And they've been doing it now. They've made significant cuts and they're going to continue to do that. And frankly, I've been listening to the political campaigns. And I knew that one campaign in particular had very strong feelings about having very low interest rates. And, and maybe pushing the Fed to do more than they were inclined to do. And so, well, that could happen. Now it seems more likely that that could happen. So I don't want to, I chose to keep it in, let's say, our more normal range over the last several years, rather than to even factor in any of this higher interest rate and keep it down at that, you know, two percent, which has been more normal over these years, rather than even saying, well, we were up at the five and a half for a year and now it's dropped a little, you know, maybe a percentage point. I could make a case for, an argument for making it three, three and a half percent. But I don't really have confidence that it's going to stay there next year. So, and maybe it shouldn't. I'd rather that you, that you see what we built up over 2023 and 2024 and use some of that, rather than budget something in the budget that, you know. That's the last thing I want to budget in a overly confident way in our budget. I don't want to set that precedent either, in case I leave.
Someday, way in the future.
Other questions?
Oh, uh, um, it would be really helpful, and this is maybe too hard and on the, too hard, on the spot. And boy, shame on me for not thinking of this question ahead of time. But just having Bob Thompson give some perspective. And maybe you can, Brady, just about the impact on taxpayers in relation to our levy because of the, I'll shoot, what's the term?
Just called disparity?
Nope. Basically the value added.
Oh, yeah, the increase in our.
Tax capacity.
Yeah, I wish, I wish Bob were here because I don't know the percentage that's, say, new tax capacity. I just know the gross number. Typically, the, you know, construction has been a very small part of that. But I'm not sure what's happening, you know, in that market now. So yeah, we're, we have, we've had significant increases, twelve percent, twelve and a half percent. And it was even higher in his first take for this year, it was closer to sixteen percent. But if all of us are going up on an average of sixteen percent, we're all paying the same. We're paying a, a little different share of it. But if we're the same people, it really doesn't make any difference to what you're going to pay.
Yeah, it's just that new construction.
It's the increase that matters, really. So, and I don't have that number. But that's something we can bring to the next meeting.
And he, he presented it on that at the Court of Appeals. I just, it's not front of mind. And it was encouraging, but not a saving grace. But I just, it could be helpful, so.
Would you want us to call him or have him bring it to our next meeting?
Um, I think it can, we can wait till the next meeting. I'm comfortable with that. I, I just think it's really important to, to consider our, our fund balance and consider the new requests and consider what our target is as far as bringing the preliminary down to, you know, five percent and, and how that all fits together. Because it seems fairly easy. I want to respect and I agree with not wanting to operationalize our fund balance. But I also want to make progress on our strategic plan. And I feel that all of these requests are appropriate. I was having a hard time balancing the benefit of those requests with the impact on our property tax levy and on, on property taxpayers. And, and, you know, I think we can cushion that with fund balance. Just so we can try to get a better handle on, on these. These are unusual, many of them are unusual requests that I don't think we should expect to have year after year. And we have them pretty well defined here. So if we can, you know, assume that they will have those in the next year, we can try to do a soft landing or, you know, off ramping from our fund balance and, and put this into our operational levy.
And that's certainly, my thought is to, to create an off ramp or glide path using some of those dollars. And it's really encouraging to look at what we've been able to set aside and that we have very healthy fund balance and that we have our, our PILT money that's part of that.
Yeah, in particular, the PILT money, I find it particularly disposable for us to do this. To Commissioner Johnson's point about past conservative budgeting, I, I think it could be helpful to look at past fund balances and how, to what degree has our fund balance grown over these last few years? And use that number to somehow balance the, the dollars that we could use from the fund balance to help offset the levy. So I don't suppose you have those numbers handy, I'm ready.
Well, it depends on how you want to hear them. I'm looking at the gross numbers year to year. Yeah. So this, this is just through our audit. That's our, that's when we know our fund balance. So for these major funds, in 2023, total is twenty, twenty-one million, one hundred and twenty thousand. The year prior, seventeen million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that's, um, that's, it takes some explanation. Some of this, this is why it's, it's hard to get too deep into these numbers because they can vary tremendously over our types of investments and how they appear at the year, end of a year. And so we've had years where they have to adjust our interest revenue, as they did in 2022, down to basically zero. Because the type of investment we had at December 31st, if you had to sell them all off at midnight on the, on December 31st, you know, you'd sell them for a loss, some things. And then you have to show that on your, in your audit. And this, and, and that goes back and forth. And so that happened for '22, '23 it reversed, just as, just as it does periodically.
It's not every other year? It's not that simple?
No, it's not every year. But since you hold on to your investments and you don't sell them on December 31st, so. So you have a little of this yin and yang. But, but through these last one, two, three, four, since 2020, it's been seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, and twenty-one million has been our fund balance. And our percentages of our current expenditures during that period have been ninety-eight, ninety-seven, eighty-eight, that little drop last year, or in 2022, and then up to ninety-four percent again. And I expect it to go higher again in 2024 because of the interest rates. So it's, it's been solid. It's been, we've had that significant amount of money in excess of our current expenditures for a number of years. The, the caveat to that, as always, is the recession that's, it's always on the horizon for the last, let's see.
Eleven?
Yeah, about sixteen years. They've been talking about it, but it hasn't happened yet. But the minute you think it won't, then it will, so.
So if we just keep saying it's going to happen?
Yeah. So far it's worked, yeah.
That's really helpful, thank you.
I have a question, Brady, and you may not be able to answer it. But I keep thinking about bonding for the law enforcement center. And we're not doing that today. But it would help me as we're examining our budget and what we need to do with the levy, thinking about, you know, what's going to be the cost of bonding? Kind of, where is that at right now? Have you had discussions with Ellers?
Well, the interest rates are going down. What's happening with the bond market particularly? No, I haven't had any, we haven't had any talks with him for, on that for a couple of months. So it would be interesting to hear that, given the changes. They don't totally mirror each other. But in general, if rates are going down, you know, you would expect it, which is to the good for, yeah. And it's, it's in our financial management plan, which Stacy just pulled out.
We're going to need a million? Right, this is where it gets confusing because I'm wondering, this is the question I asked about. Did we budget for it or not?
This, the twenty-five?
Well, when you look at the financial management plan that we were presented, the numbers don't quite make sense. And so I raised that issue. And as far as I know, I haven't received an answer yet. They're still looking at it. So, and now we've, don't have our administrator. I'm wondering where that process is because these all may be really great things. These, some of these are ongoing. Some are one-time expenses, I get it.
Yeah.
Some, which will increase every COLA you have, every step in, step in scale, those. And that's why I think it is so imperative that we have a financial management plan, that somebody here at the courthouse knows how to plug the numbers in. Because it is so hard to make a decision today. Because we do that, I'm not going to be sitting at this table next year, but your hands are going to be tied in some ways because of, oh, wait a minute. We only have this amount of money to increase if we really want to keep it five percent. And we're digging in there. Taking away the opportunities to move forward. So I just want to make sure you're aware.
One thing, yeah, so we've asked for changes in this plan and then to take it over eventually. But, um, right now, we're in good position for the, the next bonding coming up. And it's a little obscure in here, but largely because of this one percent sales tax and the way they wrote the law for Cook County, which allows us to pay off those bonds, but continue to collect that revenue through, like, May, first quarter of 2030. And that's built into this and that covers those bond costs. The, the question in that, I would say, is the additional bonding that's being looked at. This one, I think, is pretty solid. But the additional, and then when those funds, those additional funds run out. And that is something that could be, the amount of that could be affected by a recession, for example. We had a little downturn this year in that one percent sales tax. So instead of the typical five percent, we've been looking at, on average, increase in that. It actually is dropping a little bit this year, which, that's one thing that I asked them to change in here, that forecast just a little bit. And it does, if you look back, there's periodically, there's a year or two that it falls back and then it comes roaring back typically. So we use five percent because that's kind of the average of those come and go. But when you're starting a plan, I'd rather start with, oh, here's what we got this year or what we're getting, and then build the five on that and not assume we got the five this year and next year, next year, let's start at what we got. So that's why I wanted them to adjust that. So anyway, we're, as long as, but you guys haven't really made a decision because you haven't had to. But at some point, you'll have to decide what to do with those additional revenues. And a of course, this is an obvious use of it, but there, there are other potential uses too. So. Did that help at all? And we're not looking at that right now, but it's, this is your.
I'm concerned that we are budgeting.
Levy revenues are right here.
We are budgeting general fund expenses increasing 4% every year. If you look at this, we're not even what we're doing this year. So I question the rationale of showing it. We can do, even consider a $30 million project if we still do all this. That's what I'm saying. If we really need a new building and you think about what it costs to pay for that building, is this the right time to add new ongoing expenses? I'm just raising the question.
Like Tucker Carlson. Just asking the question.
I've never watched him, so I couldn't tell you.
That's a tagline.
I didn't know that.
It, that's, that's an excellent point. And also, I share that concern. It's just kind of ignoring our strategic plan then. Or how do we balance that, right?
Exactly. That's what it is.
And what I, what I lean on is this is new. This is exceptional. We have not implemented a strategic plan. And in, in our professional development, like Attorney Hickon was talking about, it hasn't happened until now. And so this is kind of like a boom cost, right? I don't expect it, yes, it will be ongoing, but it's not going to continue to have these requests, new requests. You know what I, you know what I'm saying? It will be incorporated into the budget, but we won't then have another 683,000 in new requests next year, right? This is to get us through that strategic, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I get that part.
But we'll still incorporate that, yeah.
Out of this 683,791 that we institute for 2025, I'm curious, for those of the ongoing portion, what's that dollar amount? What, how much does this add up to in 2026 and beyond? That's why I say this is really important. And if we had this, it would help me see that better. That's why I am such a proponent of multi-year budgeting because you can say, yeah, that's great. That sounds great. And all of a sudden, you get to next year and you're like, ooh, we're, we're up to a double digit. If you do the math, we're up to a double digit figure again. What are we going to cut? Well, I like to be responsible now and at least be aware that maybe that's why we say, good things. Some of these things are appropriate this year. Some things should maybe wait. And that's where I thought this discussion was going to happen today instead of us. I don't, I guess I didn't know how you, we were going to approach this today. But that's where I'm coming from.
So I thought, I thought Brady said that our 1% is going to cover those payments.
What is it going to cover, Brady?
Well, you can see here the estimates of additional funds coming in. And they're in the general fund on this plan. And this is, this is using a 5% estimate. And yeah, they'll, they will more than cover the, the bond payments for the whatever, 8 million, whatever that turns out to be. That's not a.
It's the next one. That's the concern.
That's where I'm going.
And that, and that's where, that's a future.
And, yeah.
Discussion, honestly, like.
And initially, it's just the bond payments go on for 20 years or longer. And are you going to, yeah, you could absorb it in some sense.
So for the current bonding, and everything that we know right now, we know where we want to go.
Yeah.
But for everything we know we're doing right now, and I would advocate this as well, we can cover that. It's just, and then what? And that's kind of always the question. And then what? And every year, we face it. It's, you can't, you can't truly know what's coming.
Okay, throwing this out there. Certainly can use fund balance. We can get this levy down. Do everything on the list. We can get it to 5%. We can take out of our fund balance. We know it's healthy. You guys got to deal with it next year. That's.
And we, we will.
That's what I'm saying. Then you're going to have to deal with the double-digit levy increase.
Well, no.
And when you say, if you, if you decide go forward with a $30 million budget.
That's the first thing to answer.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's the first question to answer. Not, I mean, that's, that's the question for next year, right? For right now, we're trying to address things that are in front of us that we know. And we know where we might want to go, but we might have to have those conversations when they come to us. That's, that's, we can do a certain amount of planning, but I believe that these new requests are going to better our organization and strengthen it so that we're going to be better able to address those tough questions again. But it's, it's just kind of, that's all part of the process and.
Well, can't we kind of share the pain? I mean, can't we say, of this 683 million, half of it will be okay and the other half, we can't? That's the pain part.
Sure. Yeah, we, we could say none of it, or all of it, or some of it, or whatever. It's just that we, what I'm advocating for is that we can afford it because of PILT and fund balance and the 1% and our current known bonding needs. And what Commissioner Johnson is saying is, and then what? Because there are future bonding needs through the capital improvement plan. And that's absolutely accurate. It's absolutely true. It's just that one step at a time.
And I'm aware of a long range. Look at the history to project the future. So.
Well, we just talked about the lack of an administrator with those projects and all of that capital improvements. And I think it's a different, it's a different calculus when we have that professional leadership to be able to charter a path so that when a commissioner leaves, it's not just up in the air. It's that we still have the track. We still have the path. And then we can just kind of help guide and tweak as, as we need to and as the pressures demand. But when we can do something and it was brought to us through our strategic planning, then I think we should act. And we don't have, we don't have to do it all, but I'm really struggling to say, I mean, okay, we, we haven't had staff training before. And so maybe we could do without that. But I think it's important. And I think we should start doing that for the, for the professionalism of our, of our organization. It's, it's just going to make everything stronger.
Commissioner Johnson?
So one of the questions I think I submitted, I'll have to go look, was about training. And I get it, we have it in a couple of different places. Each department, there were some large amounts for training and supplies that were in individual apartment, departments. And yet then we had a large amount in the administration part of it, in HR department for staff training. And I guess I'd like to better understand what are the skills that we are missing that we need to train employees for? And has that been identi, well, obviously, some departments have identified it because they put it into their budgets. And I certainly believe in continuing education. And I know from the, working in the auditor's office, you have to go to trainings every so often to keep up on your skills. So totally understand that. But some, some departments had large increases. And then, and then on top of that, we're still doing more training. And I guess I, I want to see a better, what, what do we need? What are we going to use that? Who gets to use that money? Who gets to, and the, yeah, I understand now we don't have our administrator. That's, was kind of that focus. So who knows what it will go forward. But I don't know. I'm just wondering why, what, what the reasoning was and where, how we came up with that number.
And I don't know, but my shot in the dark here is that the departments that have those trainings, it's mandated by and large for the different systems that are, that are required to use. This training is more about organizational, leadership, cohesion, team development, that kind of training. That really helps, you know, our, our broader protocols with employee handbook or just that type of thing, the broader ones versus the department ones are like, you got to go learn how to enter payroll or whatever the state requires. But I don't know that because I'm not intimately familiar with, with all those.
No, I think you got, I think that's right. We have election training we're required to take. We have to be recertified for passports and, and various things. And if you're going to get any training, you're going to go to a user group meeting periodically in our office for tax or, or payroll. Mostly, it's online. But once in a while, you go to a, you go to a meeting where they, they want to have it in person occasionally. So I think that's kind of, yeah, that's kind of universal, I think, department to department. There's some things you, you're required by the state to get that training. Some, it's the only place you're going to get your questions answered in a general way and a, is in some of these, like a year-end training for IFS, for example. And I'm sure Rowan has the same in a lot of departments. So the other things in the administration department and HRA have to be a general, I'm not sure what that, what those training items are myself, but yeah, I think you're, I think you're onto it.
Commissioner Johnson?
And I'm just looking at staff training per strategic plan, 250 per employee. I'm thinking, how are our snowplow drivers? What, what is that $250 for at the highway department as far as strategic plan? If there's been talk about that in other departments of how you would use this money? Thank you for being here.
Excellent question. Yeah, we, if you've seen notifications or heard of it, there's such things called virtual plow truck training. They do it across the state. And so that's something we have been actively exploring and trying to get our drivers into is that, as you're aware, we've had a lot of retirements. I believe close to a century of experience has left our department in the last few years just due to retirements. Well-earned, I might say. I'm not angry, just bitter. But, you know, we, we all talk about the hard, you know, the hardships of hiring and it's, it's starting over. And so what we're really trying to implement is these, these types of programs, training programs, training opportunities that have never existed. We haven't needed it before. We maybe never even implemented it before, but it's something that we believe we need to do because we need to get our inexperienced drivers up to speed as fast as possible. I'm sure you don't want to turn into a two-to-four day snowplow event when it should take one to two days or, you know, having to clean up roads more and more and more, potentially even ruin our gravel roads in the winter as we've talked about in Highway Committee, where we want to leave a pack of snow on there. And so really, for us at a very high level, and that's just the plow truck drivers, we can get into graders and other stuff if you would like, but it's, it's stuff like that. My own continuing education, my engineering technicians continuing education, certifications for MINDOT, what am I missing? Accountants, I mean, name a person. There's, there's some type of either continuing ed that's required by the state to stay licensed. So like me, I can keep my job and keep talking to you all. Or, you know, just to do the day-to-day activities, attend, you know, accounting conferences and learn from peers. Yeah, off the top of my head.
So I don't have the highway one pulled up in front of me right this minute. Do you not have a training budget in the highway department budget?
We have, I think it might be, I know our technician one, I believe, is baked into one of our, I think it's baked into our administrative line item, if I remember off the top of my head, the, the big spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like the third or fourth line, like in those top few. But that would be just the technicians and myself, like admin, and then the technicians. But as far as the truck drivers and all like that.
You don't budget for that?
I don't believe we have in the past, no. So that would be new.
So I guess I'm for that kind of budgeting. I, I'm a proponent of keeping that clear. So now that I see 250 per employee here, it makes me wonder, okay, well, now that should be highway. Well, it should be on the highway budget then, I don't, instead of HR budget. I don't know. Just.
Sure.
To keep things clear in my head of how the money's getting spent. That's.
I know there's requirements, just off the top of my head, sometimes with our own budget and the state and how certain things need to be presented, or even what we keep track of versus what someone else keeps track of. I'm not sure if that's part of this or, or what, but I, I understand, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I know with PHHS, they have just a tremendous amount of training that has to be done through the state. I don't know if Plaman, I see you back there, or Allison, if one of you would want to talk briefly about the training. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so the state mandates the bulk of our training for staff. I know there was a request at our last Public Health and Human Services Board meeting for more information on the, the types of training that are required of our staff. I'm still intending to follow up on that. As I recall from being a part of the Strategic Planning Committee, the discussion of the, by employee stipend would open up more opportunities to do general organization-wide training. Maybe it's on communication topics. Maybe it's on technology tools. That would be of general interest to all staff and not just program-specific, the mandated training that are required for our staff to perform the, the duties and meet the statutory requirements for those. Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yep, absolutely. Commissioner Mills?
And my memory of what Administrator Yorki was trying to do is, you know, is almost just putting a number in there. It's not that every employee is going to get 250 bucks to get trained. It's that we'll have this amount of money to hopefully train a bunch of people, maybe all at once or maybe in different sections. But we just needed to get some kind of number in there and figure it out somehow. So this is new, right? We'll, we'll find out.
Thank you so much, Allison.
So my thought is that perhaps we're learning a lot right now this year, that next year we have more of a line item, what that goes for, if it is 250 per employee during the year. Just a little brief summary because as in the health, Public Health and Human Services are mandating so much of the training. So we have a choice how much we want to be trained, but they don't.
And I would say also for land services, there's a lot of training related to statute and land use. And that's really critical for not only their staff, but members of the Planning Commission. So that training is important. But what I'm hearing from Commissioner Johnson is that maybe making sure that, and, and we can have the, this discussion, it would need to be early in the year, making sure that each department has a line item where that is identified to make it easier to keep track.
I think that's good.
Other questions? Commissioner Storey?
Thank you. I don't have a thought on that. I have a thought on just looking at what Commissioner Mills proposed. Of the 683, we use it all? We promote it all? Do yes, go ahead with the funds that he suggested, that Brady talked about?
I mean, I, I'm having a hard, I'm having a hard time thinking, ah, we don't really need that. Every single one of these things is like, I can really see the need there. Oh, yep, we've talked about this. Oh, that's in our strategic plan. And then I pair that with what Brady is talking about. I'm like, with the PILT, you know? And I'm like, okay, yeah, maybe we can do this because I was not thinking we could. It was, yeah, it, I just thought, as we often do, we whittle away at things. But with this strategic plan and this list of new requests, I'm like, okay, well, this is a, this is a, a new thing and kind of a, a big, a big push. So I think it's important.
So where would that leave our levy then, using PILT?
So using the. So using the.
Well, I mean, we could.
Two point.
I was gonna say, we could kind of arbitrarily put it where we want to, you know, and just compensate if we, if we truly value these things. We can use the, the pilt to bring it down to 5% if, if we think that. It's just a, you know, that the next year, there's going to be that reckoning, right? It's not going to have this big increase, but we're not going to have the pilt again. And, but maybe we don't need all of the pilt. Maybe we just need part of it to get us there. Or maybe we don't have to go all the way to five. Maybe we do five and a half or, I don't know, there's lots of ways to do it.
Commissioner White?
For the listening public, David, would you please read what some of those requests are, not the amounts, but just some of the line items? And then also from the strategic plan, when we were in that discussions, I recollect that we might not, there were many placeholders, it was a guess that way. But there was also, we might not be able to implement everything all at once. We might have to take this step by step. It depends on what we can afford and, and going forward. So it's not saying that any of these are not important. It's like renovating your house or something. All these things need to be done, but we can't, we cannot do them all in the same year.
Yeah, and I don't think the FY25 requests are all of the strategic plan. I think James selected aspects of the strategic plan and put this in. And then there's also requests from department heads that want to add this. So, but to, to go to your first request to read it, this is from September 10th memo, which is in a board packet. It's the last page of that memo, memo, and, and it was last updated September 5th, 2024. And so we have an HR generalist, one FTE, maintenance, one FTE, PHHS, Children and Family Services Case Manager, Community Center Assistant, which is point two FTE, Probation Administrative Assistant, point two FTE, Extension Contract Price Increase, General Fund Insurance Premium Increase, Payroll Software for the Auditor, Commissioner Training, Department Head Training, Staff Training per Strategic Plan, Security Assisment Replacement Fund, Required BCA Software Upgrade, Highway Department Increase in Equipment Costs, Highway Department Seasonal Environmental Worker, Highway Department Future Maintenance Worker Two in Tandem, BWCA Reprezal, Land Services Contractual Comp, County Comp Plan, Sawtooth Bluffs Planning for Regional Designation, Soil and Water, County Contribution Increase and Maintenance Contractual Plowing and Cost Increases. And so, I mean, I think the context of all those is important, such as the insurance premium increase is 3,000, almost $4,000 versus, you know, increasing equipment costs for the highway department, $60,000. So by and large, a lot of these are $20,000, $30,000. The highest ones are the first three, which is staff, new staff. And, and so those FTEs, and then when you factor in the COA, like Commissioner Johnson is saying, is that's where we're going to see those ongoing larger costs. So, and, and for reference, those are almost $300,000 right there.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, so I want to go back to something we did first thing this morning of increasing our fees. And I get that was, hey, this is what we did this year, this is what, we've increased our fees, this is what it would have been if those fees. So doesn't mean we're going to get that next year. So I understand that, but that was a substantial increase. Has our budget been updated to reflect any percentage of those additional fees?
No.
There would be a way to offset. I don't know that you want to take the number that we were presented this morning. If you want to be conservative, who knows what is going to, are we going to have the same number of building permits? I don't know. But, and I have appreciated the way Brady has budgeted in the past, being conservative. Sometimes I think he's a little too conservative and that's just why I pressed him about the interest rate. I understand why. I think it's a good thing. We can appreciate why we are so financially healthy today is because of Brady. So thank you. But I would say there is a potential revenue source that we could be using for 2025.
Yeah, I, I think we should, absolutely. And for reference, that's going to be roughly 1.4%. Maybe less, actually, we should go down 1.2 roughly.
Yeah.
Or less yet.
I, no, I've just, I'm just saying, I made a note. I had made a note to ask Tim how he intends to put that into his budget.
So that helps a lot, I think.
So.
Half of which is vacation rental fees, which.
Yeah. Which I think is appropriate. Yes. I'm not opposed to that.
It's just interesting where the, where the meat's at.
And so that's my other thing about some of the other departments also. One of my questions to Brady and Rowan was some departments, and I'm not going to name names, you can go back and find it yourself, or they can step forward and explain it to us today if that's what they want to do. But I'd asked, we got our third quarter budget report, we got the IFS statement, and you can see that next year they have, are anticipating reduced fees and revenues, even, that are even less than the 2024 estimated budget numbers, less than the actual 2024 year to date numbers. And I have said, since I sat in this chair, we under budget our revenues too much, not across the board, not, but there are certain places that it's consistently happening. So I would ask our leaders to go through and just double check those numbers with those department heads to say, are we sure? Can you adjust that a little bit?
Other questions, comments?
It would be helpful if we could specifically ask the departments about, about the fees because it's certainly a possibility there's good reasoning for, you know.
Yes, I, I totally agree. And that's why I asked the question in my email saying, can you explain what the rationale was for being under 2024, 2024 year to date? Could be a very good reason, I don't know it.
And we're talking significant fee?
Um, well, a couple thousand here maybe, and maybe a thousand here, which over 12 departments? I don't know. I'm just want to make sure we are. It depends. I don't know. I can't tell you because I don't know the background. I just can look at the numbers.
So maybe like a half percent or something?
I hate to speak for each department and then lump them all together because it depends. What, what gets included, what does not?
Rowan, when is your next mat meeting?
Be the first Monday in December.
Well, we could ask data processing right now because that's one of them. And he's sitting right here.
Ask away.
Well, your revenues, 2025 work budget is, budget is 2,500, which is not an increase from 2024 work budget. But 2023 actual was 3,400, 2024 actual year to date is 3,400. We still got a few months to go out of that one. I'm wondering, where do those fees come and why do you expect deduction?
This is the, are you looking at the 060 account or the 221? That's MIS and.
060.
Radio Communication respectively. Okay, so 060 is IT and the revenue that we get really comes from, in that account, different from 221 with radio. But in IT specifically, it's where we bill back to PHHS, the work that we do. And so this year we've had caseworks and I'm trying to think of another large project that they have that consumed a lot of staff time and expense. And so they're, as far as I know, outliers as to what we should expect in terms of revenue from them. And, and Brady, you can probably explain the process there a little bit about why that shows up as revenue for our department. But we, we bill PHHS, they then turn around and submit to the state for funds based on the work that the IT department does for them.
Is that like the A87 line in your department? Okay, so that makes sense to me. Thank you. That's the explanation and I get it, it's a one off. But these are the questions, when somebody's looking at this, it's in the, and maybe they don't know everything. I think this is why I ask these questions and I would like to know why these are consistently off and one offs, I get that. Thank you.
Other questions?
Just so we have better understanding too, the payroll soft, so in the 2025 new requests, additional resources, the, the payroll software for the auditor is $20,000. Is that a subscription or is this that we can, should expect?
Well, there's two, there's, there's a cost for installing it, which is, that's, that's the estimate I've heard from other counties. And then we'll also, once it's up and running, then we'll be paying, you know, regular fees. And I don't know if we'll, you know, right now, Rowan, you're paying that for Emsis.
Part of it, yeah.
But I don't know that, you know, it's debatable where it, it should be in the future since it won't be Emsis again. So when we move on, that'll probably stay over my department.
So there will be something ongoing, but not to this extent?
No.
Yeah.
And right now we've got it, we've got both in there because we'll keep, we'll stay with Emsis during the year as we make the transition. And, and actually I've got more than 20 in there. But that's the addition to my departmental increase because I've, I've also heard from a couple of counties that it was higher than they, they were told when they estimated it. That was a couple of years ago, so.
And then similarly with the BCA software upgrade, is that install and, Molly's not here, but maybe you'd know, but is that install and, and then ongoing or just install or?
Are you looking at capital request or are you looking at the professional contracts and services?
This is from the requests for additional resources. I just keep referencing this because it's our new, our new request.
Probably reoccurring then. And so the, the way that that works, we, we ask for two different things. This year in advance, we requested the hardware to do that recording that the BCA is now requiring. And then after the first of the year, we'll start paying for a subscription that's ongoing for the software that actually does it. So hardware that facilitates it and then the software that actually does it. And the software is the reoccurring that's in the 2025 budget.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Similar situation kinda to auditor's payroll.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's not an exchange, it's just an ad. It's something that the BCA says if you're going to run criminal history, you shall do this now. And we do that, so.
It's mandated.
We do that.
Anything else with their budget?
There's just, to my, to my understanding, there's just two items that are one offs in here, and that would be the comp plan and the planning for regional designation for sawtooth bluffs. And that would total around $55,000, just for our reference. Those are the only ones that are just one time, it won't be happening next, it won't be happening again next year. So the rest of it, it seems to be kind of the ongoing, ongoing costs. And some of that is for equipment replacement. And so it's just budgeting for the future costs, but, you know, there's a lot of value in doing that, I think.
It really helps to create a more predictable budget for us. Absolutely. Other questions?
I'm very much a proponent of planning for the future for, I am just concerned, sometimes things get added into a budget and because this board can change every two years and you have new people who forget what happened four years ago because they weren't paying attention, things get lost. And budgets, things get included in a budget and then all of a sudden somebody comes to sit before us and say, hey, it's included in my budget. And you've been collecting on that for five years and nobody caught it. And that's part, another part of the reason why our fund balance has increased because expenses were under budgeted. Or, I mean, we budgeted for something and we didn't spend it, but it was in there every year. So I am all for about planning ahead, setting money aside. I had a conversation with our sheriff about it, one of the first years I was here. We need to plan ahead for replacement of important stuff like that, just like our, CIP plan, plan ahead, budget for it. As long as we're making sure somebody's keeping track of what that's used for and it doesn't get used for something else because, well, it's in my, I have it in my budget. That's my concern. And I won't be here next year, so you'll all remember.
Other questions or comments? All right, well, if not, we will move on to our next item, 14, which is our administrator budget. And I would like to thank all of our department heads for being here, providing input and really appreciate your time and all the work you've done prior to today to get ready. Niva?
Do you want me to address the regional plan and the comp plan items? Because I think I could make it a little easier for you.
That would be great.
Okay, cool. I'll come on up.
Sorry.
I'm on a mission, I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay.
So thank you for standing in and doing this.
You're very welcome. I'll try to get six foot three with a deeper voice and.
Well, then we have to take a break.
Oh, yes, you would need to take a break first.
So just stay yourself and we'll stay tuned.
All right, well, just Niva Maxwell, Planning and Zoning Administrator. I sat down with Tim Nelson, our Land Services Director, to go through our budget and be partially available to answer some of your questions. Regarding those two line items, keep in mind that our department put together this proposal before so much has changed in our county in very recent with some turnover. So I think the comp plan would be a nice item to set aside for a different year. I think our county desperately needs it. I think it's a very high priority. I've sat down with Jason Hale a few different times to think through our zoning and how do we find some real solutions to our housing crisis? And I'm really invigorated at the idea of doing some very strategic rezones in our county and try to look at overlay districts, different things that we can use zoning as a tool and a mechanism to help our community. But we can't just haphazardly go out and do it. It needs to be done comprehensively, thinking about our roads and our services. So that's where a comp plan with real community engagement, bringing somebody in that can really facilitate that process is really important. So I can't just, as a planning and zoning administrator, just say, well, let's just rezone this to one acre zone and we'll be, it'll be fine, I'm sure. It needs to be thought through with real community engagement. So that's what the comp plan is there for. We don't have a community comp plan as a county. We have a lot of subplans and subarea plans that also desperately need updating, which we're working on. So the comp plan though, with our administrator turnover coming up, it just doesn't feel like 2025 is going to be the right time. You know, when we had this discussion back in June, it felt like the right year to really get serious about this. Actually, I would say a long time ago would have been a good time to get serious about it, but the next best time is maybe 2026. So. So that's what we would like to look forward to in the next year's budget. With that said, our community really needs help with maybe some zoning improvements and I'm hesitant to do that without a comp plan. But I'm very open to those conversations otherwise. So that's the comp plan item. So you could strike it and that will save you some heartache, maybe.
That would be one I would advocate for. Really, I'm trying to help. The struggles of our HRA and finding housing places to build homes. And it is zoning that is causing our issue. So I, as far as all of this on the list, I, no, I don't understand why it takes our administrator to make that happen.
I was just trying to be flexible. There's a lot going on.
I want it, I want that to happen and I want it to happen next year. I want it to happen yesterday.
Yeah, we get the funds, we'll do it, we'll work, we'll make it happen.
So I'm willing to cut anything else. Brady, you have no payroll.
For the regional plan, I guess with that aside, you know, all of our work, we'll, we'll do what we can do with what we have. So then the regional plan, that's a part of the Satoos Bluff. So the current Satoos Bluff plan isn't sufficient for the state to give it a regional park designation. So that funding was to allow our Mitch Travis, our Parks and Trails Coordinator, to go out and secure additional funding and get that plan revised to be able to get that regional parks and trails designation, to improve that plan. And once it has that designation, it opens the doors to a lot of grant funding sources. So that is what that, I think is 30,000 in that line item for, for that one. And then you're right, Commissioner Hawkins, we did, you approved the fee structure improvement. So I think that was about 125 projected improvement on our department's budget for next year. So obviously, that's not reflected in these either.
Neva, am I correct that there are potentially funds available through IRRR for our comprehensive plan?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, theoretically. I haven't dug further into that because I wanted to see where this year's budget went.
I will start talking and start digging.
Is that the 75 grand from grants?
That is under, it should be under the 394. So the comp plan is shown under professional contract services, under 6280. And then the income for, yeah, grants, the 107,000 is the grants that we would apply for.
Okay.
I need a ruler.
Yeah.
Find the right one.
All right. Any questions for Neva? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Rowan, on to item 14.
All right. Item 14A is to approve the 2025, 2026 labor contract with the Cook County Employee Association. My understanding is Administrator Yorki was in the process of finalizing the THS, the tentative agreements with these documents, just the redlined versions, doing the paperwork to make sure there was a clean version. When everything with him happened and since then, he's been able to complete that and then add it to our agenda. There's a review, you'll also see the LELS is on today's agenda, the local 49ers is not, and that has to do with just a, a review process that they need to do. Aside from that, all I really know is that, you know, that there was a tentative agreement between the representatives from commissioners and Administrator Yorki as well as the bargaining units. And so my understanding is it was just the, the time that it took to get the redlined versions cleaned up and sent for review. And that's happened with both of the contracts we have here today. I leave any details or questions that might need to be asked about the specifics of the contracts to the commissioners who represented the board in those meetings.
So both Commissioner White and Commissioner Mills sat on those negotiations. Anything you'd like to share?
Nothing for me. I'm glad to have come to an agreement with all three bargaining units. I appreciate the work on, on their end too.
Absolutely. Commissioner Sterling, you have a question?
Thank you. I guess I'm disappointed to see that it's only for a year when we previous.
Two years.
Two years. We did it, you tried to do it for three years. Is there any thought that you would just let an arbitrator work with the different unions? The reason I ask that is that I've been asking when I go to other meetings and several counties are turning just to the arbitrator with the unions and no commissioners, no administrator. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think you mean a negotiator, maybe. Arbitrator would be after you go through mediation without any, without any resolution and then you'd go to arbitration. And that's just a judge who decides based on the evidence put before and neither party can, can go against that. So I agree, most counties use a negotiator with administration very, I haven't met. I, I think Carlton County has one commissioner just sitting in the back, keeping an eye on things, but they are not involved in the negotiations. And I can see why not. Speaking with our unions, I think they greatly appreciate commissioners being at the table to really, to really have that connection because the buck stops here. And, but I see, talking about professionalism, I can see, I mean, it's, what do I, I'm not a negotiator, like, I can see where a professional would be really valuable there. That being said, one of our unions, CCEA, does not have a business agent. And so that, I think, makes it less of an equal playing field in that situation in particular. So I don't, I don't know. I don't have strong feelings on it. I appreciate, I appreciate it though. I, I think about that every year.
I had to reflect back when we were working and working and working. It was just such a foreign thing to begin with, you know? So I'm just thinking, is there another way? Not to make it easier, but just to make another way that would be more negotiable.
Yeah, better, yeah.
Well, I think having the administrator with the numbers and all of that knowledge was essential.
Oh, yeah.
And I believe we had very sane, good dialogue with the, in each of the different groups. Didn't agree to start with, we had good discussions about it. They went back to their people, they came back. The LEC did it once. Did they come back and we, or not at all? I don't remember that.
Oh, yeah.
And then the 49ers went back and forth a couple of times and the CCEA. The first two had their own representatives from the main unions and that was very, they, they knew the big picture and so they could explain to, to the members here, this is a good thing, a bad thing, however it is. But I thought that they were very good conversations with everybody at the table wanting to come to a solution, to come to something that they felt would be fair for the employees that they were representing. So had it been a different situation where it was very contentious and we were unable to communicate what seemed logical or many more numbers being required, perhaps then we would have been out of our league. But as it was, it, it went very smoothly this time around.
And I can see that I think the, the way that it's being done builds a lot of trust. And I think that is a really important thing with our employees. And so I would say, yes, there are other ways of doing it. We can certainly explore that. But I think that building trust is really important in an organization. I think it's just so important. Thank you for all your work doing these contracts, Ray.
When you do it in-house, in-house in that with the commissioners, it's less of a, I mean, it's administration versus the workers. And so, but we're all here, so it's not quite the them and us as it is when you get to the next stages where you have arbitration, where you have mediation, arbitration. It stays calmer and we're personal, which is of course, could be a liability, it's a risk. But I, I, I agree with you that it's, it gives the people, the workers, an opportunity to hear that we as the commissioners sitting there had more than just the budget in mind, that we were trying very hard to address their concerns. And it gave an opportunity for us to share with them, you're not the only ones. So it was good.
Well, is there a motion to approve, let's take the first contract, the 2025-2026 labor contract with CCEA?
So move, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sterling. We have a motion and support. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. And Commissioner Sterling, I was pushing, just knowing the process, I was pushing for a three-year contract. But there's just been so much uncertainty that, and one year is just too short, right? So every, so, and I think the unions were also wanting a longer, you know, but it was just, that's kind of, we dialed it back a little bit. So I appreciate you saying that because that would be my intention too, but yeah, just kind of situational, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then our next item is to approve the 2025-26 labor contract with law enforcement labor services, LELS. Is there a motion?
So move, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? I'll support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Updates?
We'll keep it brief. I know it's been a long, long meeting. BKV has worked with us to identify a design team, which includes members from the sheriff's office, emergency management facilities, Commissioner White, BKV representation as well. Their architecture firm, Shane, who's with us, I forget the name of the firm, but the architect will be there as well as a construction manager to bring the master plan to architectural drawings that could be implemented as well as provide real costs from that construction manager to get us a guaranteed maximum price on that project. We have a timeline laid out for those meetings and that process to take place. Over the next several weeks, we'll be, we'll be working on that and keeping the board updated as we go. Other noteworthy items, North Shore Waste will be coming to the committee of the whole, our next committee of the whole meeting. And while they will present their information and, and the contracts that were executed today are supported by the board for them to have the big picture of what that project's going to cost, as well as explain the funding that they have and their timelines. And we've also asked that elders be present to follow them after that, after their presentation during the committee of the whole to explain the impacts on the financial management plan, should we move forward with supporting to funding the difference that North Shore Waste needs to build that facility or that we need to build that facility. And that's, those are the big ones. I just say thanks to all our staff for being here today to talk about administrative form of government, our options there, as well as answer budget questions. And thank you to the highway department and Arrowhead Electric for all their work on Monday, being early and staying out late and up early again. That's all I got.
Thank you so much. All right, Commissioner updates. Commissioner Johnson?
I don't have anything to report.
Commissioner White?
I attended the, no, Lake Superior, One Watershed, One Plan, and there was a discussion about the East Bay, like what we're going to do with that. And then there was discussion with the, oh God, what's the other one? The management board.
North Shore Management.
North Shore Management Board. See the, talking about, and this is, this is a discussion that needs to be continued about when there are variances accepted or granted in the different counties, should, should the North Shore Management Board be made aware of all of them if, or the ones that ARDC think that there might be an issue with? It, it has changed over time and I'm learning, it used to be, and so they're trying to figure out, I mean, we're going to have more discussion about this, but my conclusion is that, from what I know, is I have great confidence in our, in our people that make those decisions, our planning and zoning. And I believe, if I had a question about something, I would come back to them and get the, I, I don't have the answer. So I was at the hub again yesterday and they have now a full board of seven. They've hired two new people, not hired, there's no money there. They've got two new people to be on the board and.
And do they start in January?
Yes, yes, they will start in, well, no, actually, they started at the meeting yesterday. They were allowed to vote. And it was, remember their names now? I don't remember their names. I can see them, I know their names, but they're not coming to my head right now. But two very active community people who have, over time, had experiences either through their moms, their grandmas, their, with the hub, and they want to be able to help this organization continue to grow. It was brought up that the hub offers the East and they should be considered as an essential service almost for the number of, of offerings that are there for our community. They had 30 people come to get their toenails clipped. You know, that's, it is that, and our public health and human services offer a lot of opportunities for the community in that building. So there, and they point out that we have, we have the room, we really have the room. So they're going to be having, back to food, pasties, a pasty fundraiser, and we all get to help make them if we want to. And next time around, they're going to bring samples so we can decide which ones we like Bring food, I follow. So anyway, those are, those are the biggest things.
All right, well, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
I wasn't going to update, I wasn't going to share any updates, but there is a big one, is the EDA has extended an offer and it was accepted to Heidi Crampitz. And so she will be at her November 19th meeting and that's very, very exciting.
Who's it?
Heidi Crampitz.
Crampitz.
Yeah. She has EDA experience as an executive director and comes from Kanabik County and, yeah, very, very happy with that and the board is too.
Very excited.
I'll probably think of something else to update after I pass the mic.
I can always come back to you. Commissioner Sterling?
So you mean I'm going to trigger something that you might want to talk about? Well, I had NACO, a long NACO meeting, but I'll be next week and most of my meetings are the next two weeks. So I have nothing else.
All right. So looking back, after our last board meeting, we had budget facilities advisory committee and there's a request, so Rowan. And there's a request, so Rowan, Henry was, they asked, and I'm sure Henry has, the square footage by department that we currently have, just so that they can look at that and part of their analysis. You were at the meeting, so you're aware of that. I also thought it was interesting, Randy Knutson asked at the meeting about adding a tax to vacation rentals. And he cited the state of Hawaii as having a special tax. So I did some research. I've also sent some questions to Assessor Thompson. This would be more in the legislative work that we might do. But in Hawaii, they charge ten point two five percent extra on vacation rentals. So that was quite interesting. And then there's a couple of other taxes in addition to that. But anyway, something to look at for future state discussions, AMC discussions. I love getting people to turn their heads, you know? Then we, on the twenty-fourth, as Rowan alluded to earlier, had our legislative luncheon, which was the first legislative luncheon held by the Cook County Chamber of Commerce. But they did invite us to attend. And so Commissioner Mills and I, Assessor Thompson, Rowan, and Jason Hale with our HRA were all there to present. We spoke to childcare, mental health needs, fiscal disparities, tax classification, the transfer station, and housing. And then en route up to Grand Portage for the gala afterwards, stopped at Gunflint View and talked a little bit about that project. And currently, there are only thirty-eight units that are unspoken for out of the fifty-one. So things are filling up, which is, is good news. And again, we think back to all our partners, IRRR, working with the EDA, the HRA, working with our legislature to make that possible. And we need to continue all the hard work into the future so that we can continue to grow our housing stock. We had a county safety committee meeting, and one of the things we're researching are a little addition to our AEDs. And we're talking about adding overdose prevention supplies. Andrea Orist is leading that charge. And that would be a separate little box that could be included with that AED throughout the county at all the AED locations. We had firewise meeting, and Aaron Mollin-Kling has resigned effective the end of the year. And so we will be looking for a new firewise coordinator. As you're aware, he does both Cook County and Lake County. It was just way too much. And so anyway, we're actively seeking someone for that position.
Is it just for Cook County?
Just for Cook County. That is the way it was posted. He took both positions, Cook and Lake, but again, it was just too much. And given the distance from his home to, it's three hours from his house to Cook County. So that added on, I think, a significant amount of stress, too. You think about all the spruce budworm and just the additional needs, requests for new firewise communities that wanted to be developed. He couldn't even get to all of those.
Is he staying on Lake County?
He is staying on Lake County.
Okay.
So. Then we had our Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway meeting and met with the U.S. Forest Service and people from the DNR down at Swamper Lake to talk about what went wrong with burn piles last year and the need to really try to use local contractors, that local knowledge, keep the burn piles down, let them age a little bit more. But it was a very, very valuable conversation. And then at the meeting last Tuesday, Robbie just reminded everybody on the trail about the Mill to the Hill project and that traffic next summer going up and down the Gunflint Trail will be one lane at certain points and to expect delays. And was really just alerting all the resorts, as well as the seasonal and year-round residents of what will be happening. And then he also brought up, which ties in with the Rainy River, Ramillion Headwaters, One Watershed One Plan that I sit on, that the year following Mill to the Hill, there will be the last ten miles of the Gunflint Trail, which is going to be worked on. Think about the end of the Gunflint, it's one big swamp. And we decided to put a road right through the middle of it. So there will be working on culverts, making sure there's good drainage and flowage back and forth between each side of the swamp. And so anyway, Highway Department will be working with the watershed to make sure that we are collaborating all the way. And then the last meeting was Soil and Water Conservation District. And graciously, Stephen was able to get here this morning to explain that last-minute letter of support that was needed to try to help with funding for our coastal erosion issues in East Bay. And that would be what I have. Did you come up with anything else, Commissioner Mills?
Um, no, thank you, manager.
All right, just checking back. All right, with that, we have a number of upcoming meetings in the next couple of weeks. And we have our lodging tax comparison through August, and then some really exciting anniversaries to celebrate with our staff. We have Ally Iverson at the Sheriff's Office, two years. Nancy Deming with PHHS, two years. Angelie Coleman in our Sheriff's Office, three years. It's gone by so quickly. Steve Olson with the Highway Department, four years. Grace Granogar, PHHS, six years. And Jesse Backstrom with the Highway Department, eleven years. Norris Cleggstead, also with the Highway Department for an eleven-year anniversary. And then our milestones, Ben Hadley with Highway Department, five years. And ten years for Jimmy Wallner in maintenance. And so anyway, with that, we are adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there support? Thank you. We are adjourned.